All right, let's get started. An ah call to order, February 6th, Friendswood City Council Regular Meeting and announced that we have a quorum. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor David Bridges with Friendswood Friends Church. Pastor Bridges, thank you for coming. I know this is, we are in your last month of you serving our Friends Church down the street. You've been there 23 years, I believe. And yeah. Thank you. Thank you for not only coming and invocating for us occasionally, but serving our community as well as you have. So, we appreciate you and look forward to your words. And then please remain standing after that. We'll say some pledges.
Let us pray. We thank you, oh God, for this place, Friendswood, Texas, that we all live and enjoy. And we thank you for those who have gone before us, our geographical ancestors, who have worked to make this a good place to live. We thank you also for the people in this room, those who have been elected and appointed to serve us, for those citizens who care deeply about the well-being of this place. And this evening, I ask your blessing upon those who will make decisions, give them wisdom, give them courage to do what's right, to the best of their ability. And God, this evening, we remember those in Turkey and Syria who are suffering from the earthquake, and we've been people who have suffered from natural disasters as well. And people near and far from us have helped us and been generous to us. So, God, I pray that we might be generous toward those in Syria and Turkey at their time of need, that you would send your people to serve and to care for them. All these things, we pray with great hope in you, God. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Best of luck to you, David. All right, item four is council member comment. Can we, you shutting the door, Stephen? Thank you. I got a square dance going on. Item four, council comments and reports. So, I'll kick this off, and I had the pleasure Saturday night of attending our daddy-daughter dance. My daughter was unavailable, but I made it over there anyway. Councilmember Rocky and I actually had the duty of handing out cowboy hats to these young ladies. We had pink, blue, and white.
It was a hard decision for some.
Yeah, you looked really good in a pink one.
Thank you.
I'll tell you that. Anyway, Councilmember Rocky, would you like to follow?
Yeah, I just want to comment, in the last couple of months, there's been a documentary, and then there was a 48 Hours on the tragic events from 20 years ago, in which our city was involved. And in both of these, the Friendswood Police Department came across looking very professional and very good, and the town did too. And I was very proud of our officers that were involved and the dedication over 20 years that they spent on this and the work they did on this. And Josh Rogers looks really good on camera, by the way. So, I just wanted to say, you know, it was just very, made me feel very good about our police and how they care about these things and how they continued to work this and ultimately were successful in bringing some relief to the families.
Thank you. Sally Branson, happy birthday.
Thank you. Let's see, a couple of things. On HGAC, I wanted to thank Murad and Hill. They both agreed to continue to serve on the Transportation Advisory Committee. I do have it on. You just can't hear me?
Yeah.
The red light means on, right? Usually, red means stop. And Murad, right now, is currently the second vice-chair of the Transportation Advisory Committee. So, thank you for representing small cities. And then also, most recently, the Transportation Safety Committee has two new members on the Public Transit State City County Engineering and Planning. Hill, once again, where is Hill? There he is. Thank you, Hill. You were a favorite at the nominating meeting. And then we have a new addition, Law Enforcement, Fire, EMS Emergency Management, Brian Mansfield. So, I want to thank all of you for reaching out beyond our borders and spending your time with our HGAC. I appreciate that. Just continuing just a little bit more with HGAC, we held our first-ever retreat, first of its kind, this back in January in Galveston. And there is a plan for a second retreat later on this fall. The primary focus was to set some goals, and the goals for HGAC are water, but not just limited to drainage and flooding, but also drinking water and some other aspects of water, health, and not just health like you would think, like the doctor and annual checkups and things, but mental health was a big issue that was discussed, like there's a great need there. Broadband. During COVID, we all found out that not everybody has access to internet, and everybody can get to their library. Thank you, Matt. So, I wanted to focus on that. And then also, middle housing. It seems like there's a missing piece in the housing areas here in our region. It's a 13-county region. I'm sorry, I should have said that to start with. And then finally, customer service. HGAC really wants to try to focus on and provide the best customer service they can for our region. So, I really appreciate those goals that were set by HGAC. So, if you have any feedback or questions or concerns or anything you think we should be focusing on, please let me know. And then switching gears.
Could you give like 30 seconds on what HGAC is? A lot of people are hearing that acronym very first time.
So, it's Houston-Galveston Area Council, and it's a, they call it a COG. And what that is, is we are a group of governance that all join together. So, it's the county surrounding Harris County in Houston, and it goes as far south as Mahatoreda, as far north as Waller, Austin County. So, there's a big old map, and I should have brought that, so I apologize. Next time, I'll have that when I talk about HGAC, you can see the map that it covers. But we're actually the largest COG in the nation. So, and it's just right here in our backyard. And for Murad and Hill and now Brian and myself to be serving on that is really a big deal, because it means that you're out there reaching beyond your borders. And one thing we have found, and not just for smaller cities, but even big cities like Houston, are finding out that in order to get things done, you have to work with your neighbors, you have to work with your partners. I know a lot of you know this about flooding, in that anytime you are trying to rectify a flooding situation in your community, you've got to take a look at how it's going to affect the folks downstream of you. So, everybody's got to work together. So, that's what HGAC is all about. And it got started way back in the early 80s. So, it's been around for quite a long time. Does that help? Okay.
I knew what it was, but I knew.
Well, I know you know.
I knew a lot of people.
Mayor's been attending too, so I appreciate that. But if you do have further questions, I'm always around to help answer. Brian, you just got some pub, but you missed it, dear. Thank you for serving on the Safety Committee. Switching gears to Historical Society, we feel like it's been long overdue, and we're finally getting this off the ground. We're going to recognize our board member emeritus, and these are folks who served for at least 10-plus years on our Historical Society Board, but are no longer serving on the board. So, you do have some people who are serving on the board that have been there for 10-plus years, but these are the folks who have moved on. And unfortunately, many of them have truly moved on, and I don't mean that in a disrespectful way, but I just wanted to give you the names of those and then let you know that we're going to have the recognition at our board meeting in March at the Friendswood Library in the Joyce Anna Baker Room. So, we'd love to invite any of y'all to come. It'll be on March the 7th at 6:00 PM in the Joyce. And we'll have a little K. and punch too. But we're going to be honoring Joyce Anna Baker, Bunny Baldwin, Mary Ellen Bullard, Mary Ann Lawrence, Evelyn Newman, Verla Perry, Deborah Sasser, and Ann Whitaker. And if they are no longer with us, we've invited their family members as well. So, please come and show your appreciation for those who have done such a terrific job of preserving our Friendswood history for all these years. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Councilmember Hanks.
Thank you. This coming Wednesday, the senior citizens will be celebrating Monte Grove at the Activity Center, and those, that group of people, they have a lot of fun. So, if you're available, come on. Are you going, Mike? Are you going there?
I am.
Good.
I am.
I'm going too. So, yeah, we'll have a little fun. And then also, I wanted to thank KFB for all of their due diligence. That's a committee of 30 people from all different backgrounds, different ages, different parts of the city, that work very hard. They had, they helped with the tree giveaway, they helped with Spring Sparkle and Fall Hall and the Pollinator Garden, and the list goes on and on. And I know we're going to get to hear from them tonight after they had some town hall meetings with our, with our park staff. And so, I just really want to give a shout out to them for all that they do. And then last but not least, and I'm sure you're going to say something about this, Mike, so I won't steal your thunder, but I am the liaison to planning and zoning, and I've had the privilege, for being that liaison, for three years that I've been on council, three or four. And Joe Matranga has been the chairman most of those years, and he is stepping down, and he has served our community and that committee and this council, this city, very well, in a very professional manner. I described you as a great listener to someone that was asking me about you. So, thank you, Joe, for all of your service to that committee.
Real quickly, Mayor, I just want to mention that I was last Friday evening at the 55th Annual Friendswood High School Musical, and it was in honor of Dr. Merlene Kennedy. And it was really special for me, because in 1977, they had The Music Man, and I played Tommy Gilis, and I met my wife. She played Zenita Shin. And I, I'm just, it was really a wonderful evening, the Friendswood High School Musical, 55 years, even during COVID, they had a musical. And it all started with Dr. Merlene K. We called her Aunt Mert. And just a wonderful time. Our kids are so talented, and the music was just wonderful, and the dancing, and it was just a lot of fun to see that musical again. Oh, and I'd also like to mention Joe Matranga, you did a great job. I was actually the liaison for a little while too, and just an excellent superb job on P&amp;Z, and they're going to really miss your expertise.
Councilmember Scott.
Yeah, I would just like to say, Joe, thanks for your service to the community. You did a tremendous job while you were on planning and zoning, for sure.
Just want to say the same thing. Thanks. No, I hadn't been up here long enough, but learned a lot by listening to you up there. Appreciate everything.
So, Joe, thank you so much for your long term. I think you got on there July of 2017. I was still a council member when you got on planning and zoning, and you've served so well, you know. And I'll just, a quick, quick story, you know, when people step off of planning and zoning for whatever reason, and I don't, I should be careful before I say this, because there might be some ex-planning and zoning members in the audience, but typically, I'll ask Aubrey, you know, who is our staff liaison, planning and zoning, and I say, oh, what do you think about so-and-so leaving? And she'll be, well, I'm okay. This time, no. This time, she is very, she is very upset that you are leaving, Joe. So, you have been a stalwart there, and sitting next to your vice-chairman there, Richard Sasso, and the two of you have really done some great work for us over the last few years. We appreciate you.
I thought I heard a loud guy.
Aubrey knows the people I'm talking about. Now, we've had great volunteers, great volunteers on planning and zoning, but you know, sometimes...
I'll just, I'll put the shovel away.
Yes. All right, on to public comment, if we have any public comment. In order to comply with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, city council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, a city council will listen to public comment and may, one, refer the item to city management for further action, or, two, direct staff for the placement of said item on a future agenda. During public comment, the public shall comply with rules of decorum. Joe Matranga, your card is right on top. I invite you up, sir.
Thank you. And you guys actually said most of, some of what I was going to say, but I wanted to reverse it. As most of you know, I stepped down from planning and zoning last month to run for John Scott's, city council member position number five seat, when he steps down in May. But over the five years that I was on planning and zoning, and the four years especially, the four years I was chair, thank all of you for your guidance and help, city staff, you know, couldn't have obviously done it without full support from city staff. I think we accomplished a lot of great things, and it's a rewarding commission to be on, and I've enjoyed it a lot, and I've always felt the support from you guys. Even when we didn't always agree, we always could discuss it and talk about it and understand the differences of why we came to different conclusions. But I would recommend anybody here tonight that wants to make a difference in Friendswood, I absolutely highly recommend volunteering to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission or any of our, you know, volunteer boards or committees in the city of Friendswood. It's a, it's very rewarding. You work with great people that live in Friendswood and work in Friendswood. So, thank you very much for all your help, all those years. You know, obviously, it's a team effort with everybody. Mayor, council members, city staff, thank you, and especially a huge thank you to my commissioners, that the six remaining that are there, and to Aubrey Harbin and Becky Bennett, they were great. So, again, thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
And thank you for the kind words.
David Allen.
David Allen, and also Sally mentioned the Houston-Galveston Area Council. That is, it's not a county, it's not a city, it's not a state, it's kind of an invented government, and you get a lot of federal dollars dispersed through it, but you have to watch the contracts. They have little tricky things. Maybe that was the one where we got the anti-nimbyism requirement. We got a contract that required the city to teach anti-nimbyism classes, and that's, it was kind of funny, but you know, we could get actually requirements that are seriously bad, and so keep an eye on that HGAC stuff. So, as you may know, the President has turned over the borders to the United Nations. They now run our country on the edges. We're getting huge immigration, and you'd say, well, gee, maybe the person is, that did that is not in his right mind, or, you know, just is doing bad things because he doesn't know any better. No, it's a program. The United Nations Replacement Migration Program for the United States, you can look this up online. I have about 15 copies of this. I'll put on the little table outside there. The Replacement Migration Program for the United States calls for approximately 600 million illegal aliens to come in by 2050. They want a population of the United States at 1.1 billion with approximately 73% foreigners. This is not a United States-friendly program, ladies and gentlemen. Learn about it, do whatever you can to influence your legislators to stop it. This will not be good for Friendswood or anything around here, and so I'm bringing it to the attention of the city council. They already have these copies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ron, so-called.
Yes.
So-called.
Greetings, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. I'm here, last month, the city council had a workshop effort that they had on the proposed roadway behind Applewood for a new Exxon development with Heinz. And I'd like to just remind the city council of a few things about that particular issue and the project. I've been a city resident since 1992. I lived in a neighborhood where Trish Hanks lives, and I'd like to remind you of a couple things for the new city council members regarding that particular project. This initial discussion started in 1998, and it occurred right after the tragedy that our community experienced. I sat here with my three children. Just tell you how long ago, my daughter was 13, she's now 38. My son was five, he's now 30. My son was four, and he is now 29 years old. The issues that I addressed with city council, and I happened to be the first one to speak that evening, are the same issues that we face today. Let me give you just a little bit of my background. I have been in the safety and health profession for 43 years. I'm a certified safety professional. I ran a nonprofit safety training center that educates 25,000 workers a year in Texas City, Texas. I've dedicated my life to safety and health. I have a degree in safety engineering from Indiana University of Pennsylvania, and I'm a member of American Society of Safety Professionals. My concern is that, first of all, is safety. First of all, safety of the children in our community. They are the most precious asset that we have, that we are given to be stewards over. The idea of opening up our community to traffic and criminals in a time where you turn on the local news, and it's horrific what we see, is a concern, I think, of every citizen from not only Friendswood, but our surrounding areas, Houston, as we just heard, issues with the border as well. The second point about the safety and opening up our community is that of the issue of traffic and traffic safety. I live in that subdivision. Castlewood is a narrow two-lane road. People park on both sides. Putting 187 houses and connecting to Castlewood is a recipe for disaster. Those homes in Wilderness Trails subdivision, the most of them are people with their first homes, and they have small children. You drive down Castlewood, and you will see signs begging people to slow down. We already have the issue with the high school there, the issue with parking there. To be able to connect that road with 187 new homeowners and all the cars they bring in is a recipe to have one of these children hit, and that concerns me greatly. I have one minute. The issues of pipelines and the gas wells there, this is before there were any as-built drawings, we don't even know what's back there. Exxon says they think they know. We lived where we experienced Brio. They didn't think that it was bad either. So, these concerns are still the concerns that exist today, and I'd like to bring that to the city council's attention. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Jonna Epperson.
Good evening, city council and staff. My name is Jonna Epperson, longtime Friendswood resident at 1513 Falling Leaf Drive. I represent tonight my family, along with many others in neighborhoods affected by the Heinz Development proposed change to the existing City of Friendswood thoroughfare plan. As many of you know, the location of this four-lane divided high-speed roadway was hotly debated 15 years ago. And at that time, the city resolved the citizens' concerns by placing the roadway at the current location on the city's thoroughfare plan. Since then, the city, many developers, and thousands of individual citizens have referenced this plan in purchases and developments they've made over the years. To relitigate this plan now, 15 years later, to the benefit of one developer, but to the detriment of so many others, seems unthinkable. If the city is going to set up a TERS to repay this developer for their cost to build this road, then the city has significant leverage over where this road should be located. Heinz's new proposed track for this roadway deviates from the natural pathway in connecting Pearland Parkway with Brittany Bay, but rather unnecessarily jets out into the quaint neighborhoods of Mustang Meadows, Pines of Wilderness Trails, and Whispering Pines Estates. In Heinz's proposal to council last month, Carson Nunley stated that this proposed roadway change is just one of 22 iterations they've kicked around, and it is solely intended to allow Heinz to take advantage of some 60 feet of right-of-way. We're asking council tonight to push back on the thoroughfare change component of Heinz's proposal, sending them back to one of the other 21 scenarios. Aside from the senseless perpetual hazardous curves and turns this new location introduces, this certainly would have a devastating effect on the overall look and feel in and around Friendswood High School. Increased traffic, nose and noise, noise and road pollution, and even crime. Forcing Heinz to adhere to the city's existing thoroughfare plan more fairly allows Heinz's new residences to abut this thoroughfare, rather than hundreds of existing residential homes and citizens bearing the brunt of the impacts of this unplanned roadway. The location of the Friendswood Parkway thoroughfare through Friendswood will leave a permanent irreversible mark on our city, but we can minimize these effects on our most precious neighborhoods by requiring Heinz and any other developer to adhere to the existing agreed-upon thoroughfare plan, which has this roadway built on a more outer perimeter of town. Thank you, and thank you for all your service.
Thank you. Let me, that beeping, is that the...
That's the end of it.
That's the end of their time. Randy Hale.
Hi, I'm Randy Hale, and I'm here to speak on what they've been speaking on. I've got this all well-thought-out written speech I was going to make that they all pretty much covered. But let me cut to the chase of the main reason for me being here concerning this Heinz development, moving the thoroughfare, and opening the dead end at Castlewood. They very, they put very well the concerns and such that go along with all those actions. Having said that, I live at the corner of Applewood and Castlewood, so right there is where the proposed thoroughfare is going to cut into an area that'll be buffered by detention ponds elsewhere on both ends of it, but not behind my house. Anyway, as you can see, we've got a lot of concerned people, and this is just the tip of the iceberg. Very few people in the neighborhoods actually are aware of this at this point. I would like to ask this council to put together a, I don't know what you call it, a citizen review committee to be a part of any thoughts, planning, communications with Heinz or whatever other developer may choose to approach this. And allow that citizens' committee to participate in all communications and relevant meetings. I could go into our concerns or other people's concerns about the condition and quality of the land back there on the abandoned oil well fields. There's a big bare spot back there that I've inquired about a few times, and basically get the answer, well, it's not really something that we need to worry about, it's the developer and the seller, seller being Exxon. I think if we're considering investing money in this from the standpoint of selling bonds via a Pid or a TERS or whatever you call it, we need to be concerned about the viability of that product, that property as a long-term investment for residences, because once it's built, the money's spent, Friendswood is on the hook for those bonds, whether they get paid back or not. Having said that, I do request that y'all consider this community or citizen committee to be involved in it, be it with planning and zoning, with council, anything to do with this, and go from there. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Jamie Flick.
I had some handouts I gave to somebody. Okay, thanks. My name is Janie Flick. I've lived at 1404 Frontier Lane for the past, going on 13 years now. I've had three boys go, either go through and graduate or are currently in Friendswood High School. So, this neighborhood has been part of my family and my children growing up. I'm here today with a little bit of a slight change with, to what everybody's asked for here. I am formally requesting that the terminus of West Castlewood Avenue be reclassified from a connector to a dead-end road. I watched the Heinz presentation about moving the proposed four-lane connector for Pearland, Friendswood, and Lake City. I agree that the community needs to have increased access between the communities, but the proposed, the proposal assumed access to the connector at Wilderness Trails and Falling Leaf. Both of these roads are not improved and can be easily widened with underground drainage and repaving. My objection is to the project is the connection of West Castlewood directly to the four-lane connector. In last month's meeting, the city manager said that Castlewood was always planned to be a connector, otherwise it would have been designated a cul-de-sac. I called both the city secretary's office and the community development department this week, I'm sorry, last week, to ask... this week, I'm sorry, last week, to ask how to go about petitioning to have the road designation changed from a thoroughfare to either a cul-de-sac or a dead end. I was told there is no process to request road designation changes and that only city council can make a change like that. So I am officially requesting that council change, or at least consider, a change in the designation of the current road terminus from a connector to a dead end. The community development department told me it would be impossible to make a change because Castlewood is part of the long-term plan for the city. I understand and appreciate this idea. However, things do change over time. Long-term plans are constantly revised, as shown later on in your own agenda for this meeting. I have been a resident of Wilderness Trails for almost 13 years, and this is now the third time that I have heard discussion arise about the termination, the connector at the end of Castlewood. The residents of Wilderness Trails are passionately opposed to connecting West Castlewood to the outside. My thought is, instead of spending time and resources for both the city and the residents every few years to rehash the same argument, why not simply change the designation of the terminus to put it, an end to it once and for all? I apologize, I went long. But the handout that I gave you, it occurred to me when I talked to the city development department, that many of you maybe have never been in that neighborhood. Many of you don't even know what the road looks like. So all I did was snip stuff from Google Maps to show you what kind of road we're talking about. It's not a thoroughfare. It's not divided. As someone else mentioned, people frequently park on both sides of the road. These are at the very beginning of it, closer to the high school. They're small driveways, and if anybody visits them, they have no place else to park but the road. So I ask you to take time to please look at it and consider my request to change the designation.
Thank you. Mary Derval.
Thank you all for your service. I'm Mary Dervalier. I live at 1409 Beechwood Drive. I also have a property at Castlewood. I'm vehemently opposed to putting the highway through, back behind Castlewood for several reasons. First of all, it crosses the gas pipeline easement, and I don't know if there's been a study done to take into account the weight to, specific gravity load of the surface area in relation to the gas pipelines, which are gas and ethylene pipelines back there. Also, I oppose it because it's near the high school. These are first-time drivers with very little experience coming through Castlewood right next to the high school, Falling Leaf, which they also go down. We also have traffic problems through there when school starts and when school ends, and it will be only increased if we add the other highway and the other 187 houses. So as everyone else said much more eloquently than I ever could, that's my opinion. And thank you all for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Dervalier. Keith Kukler.
Hello. I appreciate the opportunity. I live right next to Mr. Sokol and right down the road from Mr. Hale. They are on Castlewood or on Applewood, and I got this lovely notice here, and I thought, as someone mentioned, it's déjà vu all over again. I don't know how many times we have to go through this. You can tell there's a lot of energy in there and it has nothing to do with, I'm on the agenda today. I can't say anything any better than others. Maybe I can just bring up another point. I looked at this thing and I'm like, oh my lord, I will literally have a freeway in my backyard. Literally. And what do you think that's gonna do to the house, price of the house? I mean, it's gonna run it into the ground. Nobody's gonna wanna live there. I don't wanna live there, and I've lived there for 33 years. So just solidarity, right? And not much more to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hank Doogie. County Treasurer, Hank Doogie.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Hank Doogie, and I am your Galveston County Treasurer. And I'm sure you know why I'm here, but I'll tell you anyways. But first, let me just say, as a former councilperson of a small sister city of yours, thank you for your service. A lot of work goes into deliberating and making decisions on the dais, and I appreciate you for it. I ran very openly and transparently last year on the merits of eliminating my office, and I beat a 20-year incumbent and a third challenger. Galveston County Commissioners Court unanimously supports the elimination of the treasurer's office. Those duties would be rolled into other full-time finance professionals within the county, including the CFO, purchasing agent, auditor. There's a lot of different places those duties could rest. Doing so will save the county taxpayers money, and it will streamline processes, and I think at the same time, make our money safer. So I'm working hard, basically to ask you to help me fire myself. I have, nine other cities have already passed the same resolution. Kemah, Craig Shores, Lake City, Dickinson, Hitchcock, Santa Fe, La Mark, Bayou Vista, and Jamaica Beach. I'm hoping you'll be the 10th tonight to pass this resolution, and then I'll work on the other three later. But Senator Mays Middleton has already filed the bill in the Senate. Representative Dr. Greg Bonner will be filing the bill on the House side. These resolutions in support are not mandatory or required for us to eliminate the office, but I think showing that there is strong local support will go a long ways when it comes to the full legislature debating this and moving it forward. So just as a reminder, if we put this issue forward in the legislature, they have to put it on a ballot for the voters of Galveston County to decide come November. My wife and I decided to not take the $117,000 salary, kind of as a gesture of good faith. Many of you know, my wife is now 21 weeks pregnant, which she corrected me today is not 50%, but 56% of the way there. So we are hoping that we can get this wrapped up this year quickly so that I can stop doing free labor. So thank you. I'll be around if you have any questions during the item, feel free to ask me.
Thank you, Mr. Doogie. So that completes our public comment, and if council will allow me, I'd like to move item 11A up and consider a resolution in support of the abolition of the office of County Treasurer in Galveston County.
I'll second.
I'm gonna count you as a motion and you as a second. Any more discussion? Any other concerns, comments? All in favor? Go back to work.
For free. I make a motion, we pass the resolution as written.
I second it.
All in favor? No, I thought I could, I thought council would allow me to move the item up, and I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I get corrected all the time. It's a tough job.
I thought you were trying to get rid of me before you took the actual. Y'all gotta watch him. Thank you, Mayor.
Chief, show the treasurer the door, will you? Okay. Item six, committees or special reports. Receive report from Keep Friendswood Beautiful regarding a recommendation to the city council for the proposed conceptual plan for Stevenson Park parking lot.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You may recall last fall, FDEDC and city council concurred on a contract with Half Associates to develop conceptual plans for the old fire station site next to city hall. That site was incorporated as part of Stevenson Park following the tear-down of fire station number one. This evening, Casey with Half Associates is here to give a presentation on the findings of their three town hall meetings and KFB's recommendation.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. We're excited to share with you our findings and working with KFB. We have tonight, can you all hear me?
Yes.
So what we're gonna show you tonight is sort of our process. We're gonna talk about the input that we received from the community, how we analyzed your site, and how we came up with a concept. And then I'll answer any questions. Right in front of me, right here.
It doesn't work, just keep pushing all of them.
Just push them all?
Yeah.
It was working earlier today. Just tell me.
So I'm giving credit to my amazing team. Of course, none of them wanted to attend tonight, so you're stuck with me, but this is the team that made it happen. Go ahead, next slide. So we had a series of three meetings. The first two meetings were our public engagement. We met with the general public at the library, presented different types of boards, had different types of park programming elements, images. We gave people an opportunity who attended to place a sticker on what they liked. And so we took all the votes from those meetings. The first meeting was held October 20th, 2022. We had about 30 to 40 people attend. We got a lot of positive feedback from the community, but it was very, it was very apparent that we wanted to keep parking spaces. And so the second meeting occurred, October 25th. We had about 30 community members, including students from Friendswood High School. A lot of positive feedback regarding outdoor dining, restroom improvements, and parking enhancements. Again, the tone was to keep as many parking spaces as possible. From those two meetings, we, next slide, we calculated all the desired programming. Oh, it's working. There we go. We calculated and tabulated all of the input we received. You can see the top three desired amenities were enhanced parking with the materials, landscaping, paving, 36 votes. The pavilions with restrooms was another added amenity that everyone was in favor of, as well as outdoor dining. Honorable mentions would be covered parking for a farmer's market event and shaded parking areas. Not too many people do. I'll just leave it right here. All right. It's you and me. All right. So based on the input we received from the community, we prepared a site analysis, which is a fancy way of saying, we went to the site and evaluated and documented a lot of opportunities and, what am I trying to say? Strengths and opportunities, basically, for the site. Just kind of quickly go over these, starting with the main access to the site. We have a shared access drive two ways between city hall and the existing Stevenson Park site. We view that as an opportunity because you can combine parking potentially. One thing that kind of separates the two sites is an open ditch drainage system. We also saw that as an opportunity because we could potentially cover that open ditch, pipe it, and cover it with paving. Another thing that you see, we documented all the connectivity points. So there's three points of access from the city hall parking area over to Stevenson Park. Within this scope, this context, we have two park features that we wanted to expand on, one being the pollinator garden, and the second one being the memorial garden. We looked through historic surveys or aerials. We found that the restroom building is quite old. We think it was built in 2002. So taking all that into account, we came up with a concept. This is the concept that we presented to KFB and as well as the downtown EDC. This is the third concept, concept C. It focuses primarily on a large, open-air pavilion to be used for arts markets, farmers' markets. There's a lot of versatility to this. We have maintained and actually added parking spaces. So I'll kind of dive into the details. You can see by letter A, letter A would be the main entrance into the park. We're incorporating that Stevenson Park archway that's already been approved. As you go up to surface parking, we're picking up roughly 108 spaces when you count our surface parking, some of the sort of hidden parking, and then city hall parking. To the plan north and south of the open-air pavilion, we're proposing overflow parking spaces that we wanted to look, make, look and feel like more of a park element. And so the idea there, we would have removable bollards at each of those parking spaces where if you had a large event, people could park. The area north of the pavilion would be an area for food trucks to be staged, and then the area planned north of that is the open air, or I'm sorry, the outdoor dining.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm sorry, the area north of, planned north of the pavilion, we're proposing that to be the food truck staging, and then the area north of that would be outdoor dining. We're including some images to the left-hand side where you can see our intention for at least what the screen parking would look like, as well as the open-air pavilion, as well as the outdoor dining. I want to point out, the open-air pavilion, we did some, some studies and noted that you could fit eight pickleball courts, two basketball courts, 42 15-by-15-foot booths for farmer's market or an arts market, 56 12-by-12 booths, 80 10-by-10 booths, and possibly 48 covered parking spaces. So you get a lot of flexibility with this open-air pavilion. Additionally, within the pavilion, we're proposing to relocate the restroom facility and add storage, as well as a raised performance area. I know I went pretty fast, so I'm willing to take any questions you may have. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We did a high-level magnitude of cost and added a 20% contingency.
Just as a reminder for council, this exercise was intended to develop a concept plan that KFB and FDEDC and city council ultimately could get behind to incorporate in the parks' master plan for future grants or potential bond elections. So there's, there are no, there's no funding to implement this plan today. This and if y'all concur with KFB's recommendation would go in the parks' master plan and likely sit on a shelf until there's a future funding opportunity in terms of a grant or a bond. This was initiated after KFB got the grant for the archway that Casey had mentioned earlier.
Mo, is there time for like a referendum to put this project, Parks project, on the ballot?
Not for May. Likely, there's, there's too much. Obviously, we haven't called the election yet, so theoretically, yes, we can put a bond proposition together, but we would have to have a special council meeting because our next meeting would be beyond the deadline to call for an election. The bigger concern, however, is that there are other needs that the city has beyond just this project, and I don't want to have a bond election without having thoroughly evaluated those other options.
That's why you're the city manager. So it's worth noting that there was a 3.4 million option, a $5 million option, and we chose the $9.4 million option. So that, that should surprise no one. So just get ready, and, and to be clear, when this, when, when or if this goes forward, it will have to be funded through a bond election that will go before the voters.
But the idea of having a plan on the books allows us to go out for these opportunities. Let's say there's an opportunity to fill in the ditch, you know, with some funding from HGAC maybe has a program, you know, that we could get the money and we could do this piecemeal. We could do a little bit of the preparation work. So having this study, you know, vetted, and thank you, Mr. Collins, for bringing it forward and half, all the good work that you've done, having that on the shelf is, is very helpful to us in eventually seeing the project completed. And yes, it'll, I'm sure, get sliced and diced a million different ways before it's ever over and done with, but, you know, we have a plan and we can show this to those people that have funding opportunities, just like we showed our plan for the downtown to text out, and they said, here's $3.5 million, go do your sidewalks and your, so thank you. There's, there's a method to the madness here. If you think, well, why are we going through this if we don't have the money to pull the trigger tonight and start this project? We're not, we never intended to do that, but we wanted to get the project on the shelf, ready to go, so that when those opportunities present themselves, we can, we can move. Any other questions? Trish, Hank?
I would like to thank KFB too for thinking forward and thinking about this and having a plan, because I too, everybody knows there's no money for this right now, and there are a lot of needs. But to have a plan, and like the mayor said, and maybe be able to do different things or go out and take advantage of the grants, and you all have been masters at that, and we have benefited from that in our park especially. So thank you, KFB, for that too, and thank you.
Thanks, Patty, for being here tonight.
Well, we really appreciate you all supporting this research and the town hall meetings and everything.
Well, I do want to thank you for the study. We spent thirteen thousand dollars for the study, and clearly what it showed is that we could gain parking if we filled in the ditch area. And I spoke with senior staff and Morad and asked just about how much that would cost to add that and incorporate that ditch into the site, and we were looking at, I think, about four hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, sir, to fill in the ditch and to prepare it for pavement to have parking.
And that would easily, that would easily get us another thirty parking spaces in addition to what we have out here. But I just kind of feel like the tail is wagging the dog here. And the reason why I'm saying that, we got a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant for the sign. I don't know, I don't think the sign, entrance sign's going to cost two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. But now that we have a sign, we said, well, now we got to go build out a park. That's like someone giving you an air conditioning unit, and then you decided to go build a house because you got a free air conditioning unit. I really think it's a good idea, and a noble idea, to go ahead and see if we could put that in the capital projects of possibly closing in that ditch area and gaining thirty spaces. That makes a lot of sense to me. And this thirteen thousand dollars that we spent, Mr. Collins, is a good, good show of that. Personally, I don't want a pavilion over a park. I believe in open air. I believe the stars under the canopy of heaven is what comes down on a park, and that's really what makes it beautiful. And we're going to cover up the entire area with a pavilion. I personally don't like that. That's why I asked if there was a possibility to get this as a referendum on the ballot and let the people speak. I think you all know that the last time we went out for a bond election, I was really for a new senior activity center for an old library that's built in the early nineteen-seventies, and it's in dire need of replacement. Our seniors are over there doing the best they can, and we keep patching it together. And then we dream up something like nine-point-four million dollars for a parking lot over here, that I think that if we excavated the elevated portion where the old fire station was, incorporate that into parking. I drove over there before this evening just to go and take a look at it and walk around and step up and down on the elevations over there. I believe when we spoke about that, we were looking anywhere from a hundred to a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. We would have to do that if we were going to do this plan. That's all got to be leveled anyway. So I would move to place as possible capital projects, closing in the ditch and leveling the parking, and that's going to have to be done even if we do something over there. And then I would say, let the citizens of Friendswood decide what they want to do. Nine-point-four million dollars. Everybody that was here that was speaking about Friendswood Parkway, they may not realize it, but we're going to have to go over Chigger Creek and Cowards Creek. That's nine-point-four million dollars in bridges, two bridges. We're going to have to go over. That's infrastructure. One thing I do know about the citizens of Friendswood, based on the exact thing that happened on the last bond election, they voted for drainage and they voted for public safety. Those two things passed. Everything else was frivolous and superfluous. So I just think that KFB did a great job pulling this all together. I think from it, I've learned that we could add some spacing. We're going to have to do something over there anyway, and I love the way the tables are set up over there. But that's what I would move, to possibly put those two items, excavating the elevations where the old fire station was and closing in the ditch, gaining those, and then sometime in the future, go with it. I personally like option one because it's all open, and it seems to me more like a park than covered parking. That's my whole two cents on it.
Anybody else? Councilmember Rock?
And this is kind of tagging on to Robert's point. Could we get a little clarity on exactly what we're agreeing to and what's the process going forward here? Because I don't understand what placing it on a master plan really means, and what we're committing to or not committing to, and what can be changed, and how, as Robert said, how would, how could we stage things? Could you just give a little help on that?
So this evening's item is simply a report from the Keep Friendswood Beautiful regarding this entire effort for the old city, old fire station parking lot. You're not voting on anything this evening. If you concur with the recommendation of Keep Friendswood Beautiful on C, you can do so, or if you would rather do A or B or some combination thereof, you can give us that direction. Parks Department, KFB, and others are currently working on the Parks Master Plan. It's their comprehensive plan. It's their general plan for what they dream and envision for the entire city, our existing park system. Later on this year, they will bring that Parks Master Plan to this body for a yay or nay vote or an adjustment vote, similar to what was done in 2019 for the downtown improvement plan. All that is is simply a guide on how you want the city to develop with respect to parks. When it goes before the voters, if we feel that nine-point-four million is too much for this project and y'all want to change it up, you're welcome to do that. This is completely something that's reflective of both citizen input, as well as council affirmation or deviation. Y'all's call. As far as Robert's suggestion to fill in the ditch now and add parking there today, as well as remove the foundation of the old fire station site, we can look at it, provided that there are others on you that concur, and staff can work on bringing y'all back a proposal later this year to tackle that with funds on hand. So this is within the downtown district, and back when the downtown improvement plan was developed, there was a private entity looking at partnering with the city to develop the site. So the site said it would be developed by others. Had that effort not been going on at the same time, it would have likely been designated as something in the downtown improvement plan. Short answer to your question is yes. The downtown sales tax can be used for this effort once the lighting project's done, because as you well know, that depleted most of the revenue from the sales tax from downtown.
So I just wanted to comment that I would be in favor of some sort of staged
Approach.
Approach similar to what Robert said coming forward to us.
Thank you.
I just had a question, because I know you've mentioned parking, and that's what we hear a lot. And I know way back there, we did not finish the parking that we had planned for Old City Park. How many spaces was that and about how much money?
So originally, we had hoped for eighty-eight spaces, and we were only able to accomplish a little less than forty, if I recall correctly. That one, thankfully, there's no drainage that's needed. It would simply be pavement, so we could probably get by with thirty thousand to forty thousand to complete that.
And then what about the lot that's off of Shadwell that's just dirt right now that we do park on periodically? Do we have an idea of how many spaces that might represent?
So
Cost to develop that into parking?
So right now, as overflow, cars are parked relatively haphazardly since it's not paved, but we could probably fit about thirty spaces back there officially, once it's fully paved, because you have to have sufficient width for turnarounds and stuff.
So that'd be thirty plus forty, seventy spaces. Would it be, I mean, this, if we covered up the drainage, how many spaces were on that?
We're looking at between twenty-five and thirty spaces.
Okay, and that'd be four hundred thousand versus?
About thirty, forty thousand.
There you are. Councilmember Corfano, if we want more, if we want more parking, we have cheaper.
We could have both. You could get all the parking here and that Old City Park probably needs some more parking. If you'll remember, we bid that wrong, and that's why we ended up with only forty spaces.
Well, what I'm suggesting is that there are less expensive ways for us to accommodate parking. Now, one issue I have with this, and it's where that pavilion is, is that that is very uneven, and I think it's a safety hazard.
I do, I do want to mention, I do want to mention, this is part of the plan, is to cover that up. That's part of this plan, is to cover that up.
Whether it's covered or not, what I'm talking about is that the concrete foundation that is still there right now, to me, is a safety hazard, and I think that that would be money well spent to remove that, because whatever we do, that should not be staying there.
Well, what I can suggest, I've heard from enough of y'all, just the hot head nodding, that I'll bring back an item sooner as opposed to later on a plan to remove the old fire station foundation and pave something over there, as well as the fill in the ditch. Now, we can have it separated a la carte, and y'all could tell us which one to move forward officially with, because, again, this is not an action item this evening. It's just a report. Depends.
I'd really like this to be on there before I get off.
Yes, sir.
So, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to be clear, I would like to have, I would like to have estimates on the
All of it.
Finishing out the parking at Old City Park and finishing or creating a parking lot on that dirt parking lot we have now and removing. I mean, I do agree, filling in the ditch is a great idea, but I would like to be able to pick and choose and see what would create the most parking for the least amount of money, is where I'm headed. So I'm not trying to pick arguments with anybody. I was trying to find a reasonable way to accomplish. We need parking around Stevenson Park. We know that anytime there's an event in Stevenson Park, the parking is an issue.
Yes, ma'am.
I totally agree. But this was a part of the plan that was presented tonight, was to cover it.
So I think plans are good, and like I said earlier, we don't have the money for it. And Morad, even though we're talking about this four hundred thousand for additional parking, I think everybody agrees we need additional parking at Stevenson Park. And if we do, any, whatever we do, in multiple phases. But I also don't want to ignore what you said earlier, that there are other things that did not make it into our budget last year that officials asked for, or the last few years. So I'd like to see it in relation to the other things that are needed for the city, too. So I guess you would present it during the budget, the beginning of the budget presentation?
Typically, yes.
Okay, that's why I'm worried.
I just, you know, again, I think that the city has other fish to fry than spending nine and a half million dollars on, you know, this fancy parking improvement. But I've said all along, put it to the voters, and if the voters approve it, then they approve it. I just don't understand. Well, I do. We get three options ranging from three and a half to nine and a half, and we're going to pick the one that's nine and a half. So that's, that's where we're at. So if you could get it back before I get off, that'd be great, but that's my opinion.
And keep in mind that this was derived at the conclusion of, or culmination of town hall meetings with citizen input, both in-person and online surveys.
Sure.
A lot of the times, the folks we hear from in these settings are the handful of folks that engage, because they may be upset about something, as opposed to when we seek citizen input on what they would like to see if there were no barriers.
Well, we all know how those work.
Yeah.
Right? So if we're going to have a discussion about parks, the people that want parks are going to show up.
Correct.
The people, the ninety-five percent of the people are going to stay at home, ninety-nine percent.
Yeah.
Right? No matter what the issue is, if it's police department, if it's fire department, if it's whatever, the people that are passionate about it are the ones that show up, but they're a small minority of the community. So, you know, I mean, again, I think that it's worth, it's not the city's money.
Correct.
It's the people's money. And so we have to supply certain thing required to provide certain services and everything else. Everything else is just, you know, fluff. So, anyway, not shocking, but I think we have a lot bigger issues than, I mean, nine and a half million towards drainage. That'd go a long way, right? So road improvements, that'd go a long way. You know, senior activities would be more worthy. So it just, I hate asking the citizens to swallow the pill on nine and a half million dollars for something that, yeah, it may look nice, but who's going to use it?
This likely will not be a standalone bond proposition anytime soon. As I said earlier, if we present this to the voters, it will be done as part of a package of multitude of other, it'll be a standalone item, but it won't. They'll have other things on the ballot for them to consider. So I don't want to take this by itself right now, because we have priorities that are far greater than this at this moment.
For sure, for sure. But I would ask that if this does make it to a ballot, that it is standalone.
Sure.
And not coupled with, you know, increasing fire department capacity and increasing drainage and
We legally couldn't do that. We couldn't.
You're going to get this pavilion.
Yeah, we couldn't, we couldn't lump it in legally, so.
Okay, good. All right, thanks.
And like I said, just to close this out, this plan, having this plan documented by Half and Associates and KFB allows us to go out for those dollars that are floating around, and there are entities that are providing grant money for projects. Now, not, I don't expect somebody to come in here, John, and write a check for nine-point-four million dollars. But for pieces of this, we could get some of this done because we have a shovel-ready drawing project. We're ready. And, you know, so, hey, I applaud you, Casey. Great work. I appreciate you taking all the inputs from all the people that you dealt with when they came and talked to you and online and everything else, so.
Well, real quick, I'm not insulting you.
No, not at all.
In any way, shape, or form. You did what you were asked to do, and you put together a great presentation. So congrats. You did a really, really good job. So this isn't personal about you. This is about stewards of the citizens' money.
Absolutely.
That's it.
Understood.
All right. I tried to get the last word, but unsuccessful. Item seven.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. We appreciate it. Thanks, Patty. Item seven, work session topics. Receive and discuss an update regarding the capital improvement projects. Chief Engineer, Hill.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to be kind of quick about this.
Thank you.
But if you guys have any questions, please feel free to stop me and ask me any questions you might have. So real quick, I'll jump into this. Fire station number two reconstruction. Hopefully, by the time we have our next CIP update, we'll be in the process of wrapping this up, and we're about two-thirds of the way done now on that project. Okay. The Public Safety Building, that's a little further along. It's ninety-four percent complete, and they're putting up, putting the finishing touches on some of the offices right now. We're getting paint in the offices and looking really great over there right now. Yes? I'll find out, and I can, we'll let you know.
Go real fast down Friendswood Drive, and you get a tour over there.
We can coordinate schedules as your calendar permits. Obviously, until the project's finalized, we'll have to get you in proper hard hats and stuff, but yes.
If not, Heather has one that you can use, and she also has a pink safety vest that you can use. Next project we have here is the Black Hawk Facility renovation and the shelter. That recently began here a couple of weeks ago, and it's very welcome noise. They're banging outside my wall this afternoon, and I could hardly concentrate, but that was a good thing because this has been a long time coming. As far as the shelter component, we're looking at a timeline to where this would be awarded in June, and so that we can have a start in July, and we'll move out of our offices and make room for that shelter. Okay, next. Okay. So next project, Black Hawk Boulevard Phase Two-B. We are ninety percent of the way there on plans. We will be meeting with the engineer tomorrow, going through some comments, and that ought to get us to the finish line on the design of that project. We're looking to have that awarded in May, and we're looking at a little over a two-million-dollar project here.
Hill, the first part of Black Hawk was about two million, one, two-point-five million, and then this phase will be about two million, and then the phase from Twenty-three fifty-one's about two million?
The phase from FM, or from Eldorado or Friendswood Link Road toward FM five-twenty-eight, just short of that Thursa, back in 2010, was about three and a half million dollars.
Okay.
In 2013, we had a bond election for streets, amongst other things. That phase that took us from Friendswood Link Road to Edenville, towards twenty-three fifty-one, was about five-point-five million dollars. So this phase that Hill's discussing is about two-point-four that we've partnered with Harris County Precinct Two.
Great. Thank you, Mo.
And so that would bring us to what we're right now calling Phase Two-C. Depending on how the rest of this shakes out, there may be a Phase Two-D, but right now, we're working with our finance department to see if there's a possibility that the city could go after a grant from Harris County Precinct Two to partner up with them to finish the rest of this project. So we'll see how that shakes out, and we'll have So, uh, we'll see how that shakes out, and, uh, we'll have an update for you, uh, guys here pretty soon on that. The next project I have for you is the 24-inch Clear Creek Waterline Crossing Project. Uh, that is a project where, uh, we, uh, brought the, uh, engineering contract to you last month, and, uh, we're in the process of getting that kicked off. So, uh, that is going to be about a, uh, we're anticipating about a 6.9 million dollar project, uh, and, uh, the great thing about that is, uh, that's largely going to be, uh, funded by ARPA, uh, our, Amer- American Rescue Plan Act, uh, money. So, uh, that's money that we wouldn't have, uh, otherwise to do a project of this magnitude. Also, um, in ARPA project.
So did we have ARPA funds left over from the, um, from the valve?
We had money from the revenue bonds, they were issued in 2018, plus some ARPA funds to make that project a reality.
Okay.
And so we shifted projects around.
This is in conjunction with the bonds?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Uh, this next project, the Surface Water Plant, uh, Number One Tank Replacement, uh, this is also another, uh, uh, project where we're using it, or looking at using ARPA money. The, uh, uh, ground storage tank at, uh, Surface Water Plant, uh, Number One is, it, uh, we looked at it, uh, it was evaluated, and it was determined to be, uh, structurally deficient to where it didn't make sense to, uh, rehab it. It would have costed almost just as much to, uh, rehab it, and so, uh, the, uh, path forward was pretty obvious on this, that, uh, replacement was, uh, what needed to happen here. So, uh, that is part of that contract that was, uh, uh, executed last month, and, uh, we're moving forward on that one. Uh, next is a, uh, some, in keeping the theme with water, uh, a, uh, ground storage tank at Groundwater Plant Number Four. Uh, this is all part of a, um, bigger picture here of, uh, what's happening in, uh, the south side of, uh, Friendswood. All this is going to be in conjunction with, uh, uh, increasing capacity, uh, by, uh, installing, uh, uh, pipelines like, uh, the 24-inch line, uh, and then, uh, it's all about getting water to where it's, uh, fixing to be needed. Uh, this ground storage tank, uh, that will be installed, uh, will help to serve the, uh, growing area. Uh, Friendswood Trails, uh, Three and Four are coming, and then Five after that, and then, uh, uh, Georgetown Development is out there as well, so. Uh, that will go to support that. Uh, and then, uh, I do have, uh, for you, uh, the Analia Subdivision Infrastructure upgrades. This was, uh, a part of the, uh, application that was made to, uh, the GLO, uh, for Harvey Infrastructure money, uh, and this was, uh, identified as, uh, a eligible area, uh, with eligible infrastructure, and, uh, this will, uh, rebuild several of those roads, and it will also upgrade, uh, uh, storm sewer. We've got, uh, drainage issues in that area, uh, and along with that, we'll, uh, be doing some upgrades to the water lines. There's, uh, three-inch water lines that need to be upgraded to, at a minimum, a six-inch water line, so. Uh, so, uh, all this will come together in, uh, this year, um, uh, the city is up for, uh, renewing its impact fee assessment. Uh, I do know that there's some, uh, cities in the area that have been looking at, uh, updating their impact fee. Alvin, uh, passed theirs last week, and, uh, increased theirs from something like 5,200 to 9,200, uh, per, uh, connection per meter. Uh, this is something that we will be, uh, uh, working on here in the next couple of, uh, weeks. We'll have, uh, a couple of items for you guys to, uh, move forward with, uh, this project. Uh, but first, we're going to start with the RFQ that's out for, uh, a, uh, engineer or firm, uh, at this time right now.
And for the benefit of council, the, the governing statutes, uh, per state law that oversee impact fees require that it's updated every five years, and regardless of what other communities are doing, there's a CIP assessments that's done for a 10-year window, five years before and after the study window are, that's being reviewed, uh, regarding capacity needs, and that's the basis of what's determined and that goes into our impact fee. So it's not, if Alvin goes to 9,000, we're not going to 9,000. We'd have to have the infrastructure justified in that CIP study to, to warrant that, those dollars.
Okay. Uh, next is a, uh, update on Barrier Boulevard. Uh, this is the, uh, project that just doesn't want to finish. So, uh, the, uh, major delay here is, uh, rain, and it's, we're getting it, uh, we're getting three days of, uh, dry weather, and then, uh, on the fourth day, when they can work, it rains again. Uh, so, uh, they're kind of stuck here, the, uh, the contractor. They want to get done as bad as anybody else, uh, but they're kind of at the mercy of, uh, rain right now, so, um, if, uh, uh, y'all have been, uh, doing a rain dance, then, uh, maybe stop that for a little bit for, until we get this done here, please. Okay, uh, next, an update on, uh, tech dot projects. Uh, the, uh, downtown curb and ramp project is ongoing. They, uh, do have, uh, the, uh, traffic signals up, uh, they're working on, uh, getting those, uh, connected, uh, and just like anything else, uh, it seems like, uh, these days, they are waiting on, uh, uh, parts and, um, material to, uh, make that go live. And, uh, talked to Tech Stop earlier today and, uh, inquired what the latest, uh, they're thinking that will happen, and, um, they're thinking right now that it'll, it'll be sometime in May when, uh, the old traffic, uh, signals will be taken down, and then, uh, the new ones, uh, take their place. Uh, and then the, uh, last slide I have here, uh, uh, unfortunately, I do not have an update, uh, on the, uh, uh, Highway Sa- Safety Improvement Program, um, uh, project that we submitted to Tech Stop for, uh, an upgrade to FM 518, 528, uh, intersection, uh, but I did want to, uh, mention this and bring it up, and, uh, and there's been some, uh, uh, residents that have, uh, uh, shared their concerns with, uh, some of the, uh, things that are going on at that intersection, but, um, there is a plan there, and, uh, it's just a matter of, uh, can we get Tech Stop on board, uh, at this stage right now, so. That's all I've got for you. If, uh, you have any questions?
I do. So in the Leo project that you mentioned?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we talked after Harvey, I think, even though the Drainage District has done a lot to help that area, there's still a street or two where some houses?
Brigadoon.
Yeah, and so will this address those, give those people relief? Will this address?
So this will not address that specific concern, but Public Works and, um, and our engineering folks are looking at Brigadoon. So when the Drainage District installed what was referred to as the Wagner Ditch Project Tribe Two of Cowards Creek, they put box culverts starting at six by six, six foot by six foot, starting at 2351, heading towards Cowards Creek South, all the way up to eight by eight, uh, when it ultimately outfalls. The capacity's there, we just need to get it under to 20, 2351, so, uh, engineering and Public Works are looking at potential solutions there.
Okay, so it will hopefully be addressed.
Correct. That, there was a certain eligibility requirement for the grants that Hill was referring to that had to be very localized for us to meet the criteria, and that's what they were able to accomplish.
And last question, no timeline on the FM 528 and 518. You said the state has, has a request, but they just haven't given it any kind of a timeline yet.
Correct. They, they have agreed with the, uh, the items that we want done, because they believe they need to be done.
Okay.
It's just a matter of identifying the funding to, to do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, Mo, it's in regards to the Public Works, um, there's very little left that we owe in the 2016 and 2017, I think 54,000 and 64,000. Are we rolling those general obligation bonds off the balance sheet this year? Will they be gone?
Revenue bonds, yes, uh, yes, sir. We're expending any available funds, uh, for eligible projects to where those are gone and off the books.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Hill.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, item eight, proposed future land use map amendment and zone map amendment concerning 401 North Friendswood Drive. I now call to order two public hearings regarding a 3,000, 36,823 square foot tract of land out of Lot One of the final plat, Jeter Memorial Funeral Home, located at 401 North Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, concerning, one, an amendment to the Friendswood Comprehensive Plans Future Land Use Map to change the FLUM designation from retail to low-density residential, and, two, a request for a zone classification change from a Community Shopping Center District, CSC, to a Single Family Residential Dwelling District, SFR. Today's hearings are being held for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to express their views regarding the subjects of each public hearing. Everyone desiring to be a part of today's hearing should have signed the appropriate list in the foyer, which will provide the speaking order for the hearings. Each participant shall be, give his/her name and address in order to provide a proper, proper record of the hearings. The ruling allows, the rules allow each person five minutes to present information. The time clock will flash a yellow light when there are 30 seconds remaining, and a flash of red light when a, with a beeping sound when the time has expired. If you have any questions, please direct them to me. I would now like to request that staff summarize the subjects of both public hearings. Aubrey Harbin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, so just to explain a little bit about the request on this, um, this property has been zoned, it was originally Zoned C1, which is commercial, um, on the 1970 zoning map. Um, so the request is to change the portion highlighted to single-family residential. Uh, currently, this, obviously, the commercial, the CSC zoning is our broadest commercial district, um, and changing it to single-family residential is to allow, uh, the adjacent business, the adjacent business owner to build a person, his personal home on the property. Um, the area in red is the specific use permit for the funeral home. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission had their meeting on January 12th, and following the public hearing, voted five to zero on a motion to approve the requested zone change. Um, the area of the proposed lot meets the minimum lot size requirements for single-family residential, and a private row will be required to access the property. The portion of the current tract that is adjacent to 518 will remain zoned CSC. Uh, we had one adjacent neighbor attend the meeting, and she supported the request, uh, so the commission is forwarding a positive recommendation for this zone change.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any comments they'd like to provide at this time? Okay, uh, I have a list of people, and I'm wondering, Janice Schrager? Anne Kivney? Are you? Julian Morales?
No.
Jonna Epperson? She left, I think.
Yes.
And Drew Kukler. So, uh, like last month, we had a little, uh, problem with our sign-up sheet, and, uh, if you put a sign-up sheet in front of a city hall meeting, everybody will sign it, no matter what. You just want to get names on a sheet, just put a sign-up sheet. People just, will sign it. So I appreciate the, the, it, it's a little, uh, you know, it's a little hard to figure out sometimes, but. Okay, so there being no one desiring to speak, I now close these two public hearings and move on to item eight B, to consider an ordinance amending the Friendswood Comprehensive Plans Future Land Use Map to change the FLUM designation from retail to low-density residential, and amending the official zoning map to make a zone classification change from a Community Shopping Center District to a Single Family Residential Dwelling District for a 36,823 square foot tract of land out of Lot One of the final plat of Jeter Memorial Funeral Home, located at 401 North Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Yeah, I got a motion and a second. I'm going to count, Councilmember Scott, Councilmember Grifon, as my motions. Anybody else have any questions about this? All in favor? Congratulations, Mr. Jeter.
Thank you.
Looking forward to the cool house that you put there. You can invite us all over for a That's not why we do it.
I'm now the city attorney.
Scrambling.
Sorry, Karen. City managers report.
Yes, sir. Uh, I would like to recognize this evening, uh, both Renee Cross and Heather Van Dyne. Both of them recently were recognized by the Texas Municipal Clerks Association, uh, Renee for completing her certification of the Texas Municipal Clerks Registration, and Heather for getting recertified. Uh, this is no easy task. It requires college level courses and two hours of, uh, at-home and online studying in order to complete, and not a lot of folks, uh, achieve that, that, that threshold, so.
200 hours.
200 hours, sorry. What did I say?
I thought you said two hours.
No, 200 hours, I'm sorry. They, they make it look like two hours, but it's really 200 hours.
We could have done it in the time of this meeting.
Yeah. Obviously, I'm not qualified to accomplish that, because I can't read. Um, I don't have this on the agenda, but I did want to mention the tree giveaway took place this past month, and all 100 trees were gone in less than 20 minutes. So that has to be a new record, so, um, that's it for my report, unless y'all have any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good job, Renee. Good job, Heather. Now, do you want to get up and leave, like, when your item's over, apparently, it's just like, uh?
They're here for, they're here for the long run. They want to hear the rest of the meeting.
They are, they're, they're in it. Thank you. Item 10, business items. A, consider awarding the 2023 Tank Rehab Project to AO Industrial Solutions LLC. Councilmember Rocky, Councilmember Aaron Wirt. Any questions for Mr. Arias? All in favor? Motion passes. Item B, consider authorizing a professional services agreement with Azovar Audit Solutions, Inc., DBA Azovar Government Solutions for Revenue and Tax Consulting Services through the inter-local purchasing system. I have a motion. Councilmember Rocky? Councilmember Grifon? Any questions on this? All in favor? Motion passes. Item C, consider approving banner permit applications for the Knights of Columbus Council 8494's Fish Fry to be held at Mary Queen Catholic Church.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Lent is coming. We got bigger fish to fry, that's right. Okay. All right, I did, uh, item 11A. How about 11B, consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023 by approving Budget Amendment Four and Proof Providing for Supplemental Appropriation and/or Transfer of Certain Funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Scott, Councilmember, uh, Branson, birthday? All in favor? Motion passes. Consider an ordinance ordering the City of Friendswood General Election to be held on May 6, 2023 for the purpose of electing council members for positions number two and number five.
Oh, I'd love to make a motion.
Motion and a second. All in favor? We'll be sorry to see you go, Councilmember.
Some will be. Some will be, some.
Some will not, some will not.
Okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
Hey, let's see here. I got to read it. I don't want to mess this up. Motion to adjourn?